Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 10th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Engelberg.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Trustee DePurian.
Present.
Present.
Present, and we have no appointments today, but we do have a few presentations. And so we will start with our very own Hudson Axelbaum to talk about the Tuckahoe Kids Table that he's resuming this year. So you may come forward, Mr. Axelbaum. Can someone help with the mic? There you go.
Hi, I am Hudson Axelbaum, and I am here to do an update on Tuckahoe Kids Table. For anyone who doesn't know, Tuckahoe Kids Table is a place that kids can raise money for the community by selling handmade items. We started last year and set up at the farmer's market in Tuckahoe a few times and raised over $3,000, which we split between Tuckahoe Beautification and Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committees. This year, we are supporting EVAC and the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee. EVAC is the Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps. I chose these nonprofits this year because they haven't had a lot of donations, and both of them are supported almost entirely through donations. Whenever there is a medical emergency in Eastchester, Tuckahoe, or Bronxville, EVAC volunteers are the ones to help. They save lives all the time. We are also contributing to the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee again this year because every year they do a festival for Tuckahoe to celebrate the end of slavery. I also got to go to the festival this year, and it was a lot of fun. On the first Sunday of every month, we will be hosting the Tuckahoe Kids Table at the Tuckahoe Farmer's Market and hope to have a few other pop-ups around the community. We did our first one last weekend and raised over $450 from our generous community. We are also looking for handmade items to sell at the table. If you make anything that you can donate for us to sell or know someone who does, please get in touch with us. Our email address is tuckahowkidstable@gmail.com. Thank you to everyone who donated and to the village for all your support and encouragement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Hudson, you're now eight years old? So, yes, you're eight years old. So when Hudson first came to this board, he was seven years old, asking how he can support his community. And so I want us all to use Hudson as the example for how we as citizens and residents should conduct ourselves in the village. We should always be looking to give back. So thank you, Hudson.
Are we selling those T-shirts, the Tuckahoe Kids Table T-shirts?
Are they selling the T-shirts? Are you selling the T-shirts, Hudson?
I'm making some.
Okay. Okay, so there may be some at the next Kids Table. Thank you. The next presentation we have today is by Jihan Herndon. She is the Chair of the Trustees at the Shiloh Baptist Church, and she's got a pretty unique community outreach program that she's spearheading. She contacted me and asked if I would support it, and I wholeheartedly do, so I asked her to come and talk to the community about it.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Hudson, I'm inspired by you. That is the work that we're trying to do. Good evening to Madam Mayor and the Deputy Mayor and Trustees of Tuckahoe. Good evening. My name is Jihan Herndon. I am the Chairwoman of Shiloh Baptist Church's Trustee Ministry, and we have begun an initiative called a Community Shower to support the migrant families that have moved into our community. And it is our hope to partner with other houses of worship, municipalities, and just residents of Tuckahoe and congregants of our church to provide for families in need. Madam Mayor, as she said, we have visited the shelter, which we're calling Plaza Esperanza, a Place of Hope, and the needs are great there. And so it is our hope to collect needed items and be able to donate them to the shelter for families in need. And so today, I just want to share what some of those needs are and how Shiloh will be receiving those goods for those who would like to contribute. So I was just there earlier this afternoon, and they shared that toiletries are still a big need. They have Kotex and sanitary napkins for women, but they do still need soap and body wash, toothpaste and mouthwash, shampoo and conditioner, toothbrushes and things of that nature. They are in need of infant formula and baby food. They also need diapers, sizes three to five. They have gotten a good amount of donations, but they tend to be the smaller sizes, and so they're asking for some of the larger-sized diapers and wipes. They are graciously accepting gently-used clothing for men, women, and children. All of the children there are under the age of five, so we're talking about toddler-sized clothing, infant clothing for boys and girls. They're also accepting sneakers and shoes. They just ask that it's seasonally appropriate. They don't have room to store, like winter coats and things of that nature at this time. They also need undergarments for men and women. They do ask that those items be brand-new. Also detergent pods are needed. The families are responsible for their own laundry. They have received liquid detergent, but it's hard to distribute amongst the families, so the pods make that process a little bit easier. Strollers, there's a wait list for families to receive strollers, so most of the children are kind of lap babies right now in mom's arms on their lap. There's no clean and safe place to really put them down and for them to play, so they would appreciate any donations of strollers. And then children's books and learning toys. They are in the process of trying to set up maybe a room where they can just put the interlocking mats on the floor, just for a place for the young children to play. So if you have toys or books that your children have outgrown and you would like to donate them, we will also accept those. So Shiloh is able to receive donations Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Our phone number is (914) 961-2664. We just ask that you call prior, just so that we make sure someone is in the facility to receive any donations. We also are having Vacation Bible Study on July 24th to 28th, so there will be persons in the building in the evenings during that week. So if you would also like to drop off donations during that week, we'll be there from 5:30 p.m. to about 7:00 p.m. So we look forward to partnering with the members of our community to do this work. We feel that none of us will go lacking for what we do for others. We're a small congregation with a big heart, but we know that many hands make light work. And so we look forward to any help, assistance that anyone can offer, and donations. Thank you.
And Jihan, can you give the address to Shiloh Baptist Church?
Sure, we at 15 Marble Place here in Tuckahoe, 10707.
And just a question, would it be helpful if you, could you send me the list of items that they're accepting and also maybe put it up on the door at Shiloh so that people know what you're accepting and what you're not?
Absolutely.
That might be helpful. So I'd just like to thank Jihan. She reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and said, you know, would you be interested in helping? When Jihan says that we have migrants, these are asylum seekers in our community, they are actually not in Tuckahoe per se, they're staying at the Ramada on Tuckahoe Road in Yonkers. And when she contacted me, I wanted to go and meet these families and was really moved at what the director said to me. She said, these are families, they have, and I have the stats here, they have 100 families staying there, 155 adults and 80 children. And the children, I thought she said, were all under four, under four years old, and the need is great. So these are families that have uprooted themselves. 19 countries are represented, and a lot of people don't know that, so they have families there from Venezuela, Ecuador, Mexico, Turkey, Russia, Ukraine, and the Ukraine, among other countries. And so I think that it's important for us to remember that many of us had our parents, grandparents, great-grandparents who came here looking for a better way of life. And many of these families are not just looking for a better way of life, they're looking for safety. And they have children who are infants, some of them. I held one who was a baby-baby, and I think Tuckahoe has a big heart. And so I said to Jihan, come and talk to the community, because I know that we will respond with a big yes, and we will help. So thank you so much for doing this and for taking the initiative. I have spoken to our librarian, Elaine, our children's librarian, and she's already begun working with the director to have books donated. And she's actually going to partner with me to go and do storytime with the children there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we have one more presentation from former Deputy Mayor Dr. Renee Howell, talking to us about the Tuckahoe Challenge, the 5K that I am preparing for, for the first time.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Trustees. So great to see you. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about what's going on with the 47th Annual. That's one of the longest road races in Westchester County, actually, Tuckahoe Challenge. So the registration is live. You can go to Run Sign Up and search for the Tuckahoe Challenge. Individual races are $25 to run the challenge, which is running the one mile, followed by the 5K. That'll be $35. It's only $15 if you're 14 or under, or 65 and over. Those are our two, you know, favorite classes. So this year, we're very excited to announce that the proceeds from the Tuckahoe Challenge are going to go to the Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And I think since Hudson did such a great, gave such a great explanation, I don't need to go into that, but as he mentioned, you know, they really rely on private donations. So we're very happy to help them. A small amount of the proceeds will also go to adding and replanting the Audubon Garden, which is on the corner of Quarry Park on Fisher. That was started 10 years ago with a grant from the Audubon Foundation from the Soundshore Chapter. So we're looking forward to seeing that redone as well. So every year, we're taking it up a notch. This year, we had a logo designed for the race by Isabel Overby. She's a college student in Bronxville, and she came up with this logo for the race. And you can, you might notice, the color scheme is based on the village seal. So we're really excited about this, and you'll see a few others, you know, in some of our social media and the posters that will soon go up around town and businesses, a couple little iterations of this. And she also came up with the design for the T-shirt, which will be this Kelly green, which the mayor is nicely, you know, demonstrating the color.
Was not planned, by the way.
Every year, the shirt will, you know, focus on one of the colors of the village seal. So we're pretty excited about that. And you need to register by the beginning of August if you want to get a guaranteed shirt. I also am very grateful, you know, we've been working to get sponsors, and this year we have a new sponsor category, the Diamond Sponsor, so that's the highest amount, and that was immediately snapped up by Chestnut Market.
How much is that?
So Chestnut, $4,000. So Chestnut Market, they actually own the mobile station on Marble Dale. So if you see them there, please thank them. In addition, we have the Raffiani Family, who's a platinum sponsor. They're very generous, and they've been, you know, a sponsor for many, many years. And of course, we have our own Broken Bow, who will be, not only are they a race sponsor, but they also will host the after-race party, where everybody who has a bib gets a free drink. So we're looking forward, we have about 50 people registered. I'm expecting the entire board to register, and so far, two of you, who, you know, I won't point out yet, but I am looking every day at the registry.
I'm registered.
Josh, yes. So I just want to thank, you know, the local businesses that have already started to sign up. We're going to be getting more, I'm sure. During August, we'll be working on, actually, there'll be raffles that we'll do online, as we did last year, which again is dependent on you signing up. And I'm going to be working with the other Daryl Taylor on, we're writing some articles on the history of the race, because actually, racing has gone on since the early 1900s in Tuckahoe at different iterations. So Trustee Taylor's son has a degree in journalism, so we're going to be putting that to good use.
Sounds good.
And that's it. I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay. And how can they register? Where can they go?
Run Sign Up.
Run, go to Run Sign Up and register for the Tuckahoe Challenge. And there is also, uh-huh?
Yeah, we'll be putting posters up for the tour.
Okay, and the QR codes and posters will be up. Okay, so we will try to get the whole board there. Wink, wink. So now we're going to move to the adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the June 5th, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? And this takes us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there are any agenda items that you would like to address the board, you may come forward now. Is there anybody? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so we'll move on to resolutions. The first one is the resolution authorizing the Bella Vista Block Party on Saturday, September 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. May I have a motion to authorize that block party?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the second resolution is authorizing special permits to Broken Bow Brewery for events with live music on July 5th, retroactive, August 2nd, August 19th, and September 13th. So Broken Bow is asking to have some live music, which some residents have asked for, have some entertainment in the village. The live music, I think, will go until 9:00 p.m. the latest, and Broken Bow has and/or will be contacting the residents who live nearby to alert them and to make sure that people are comfortable with that. So may I have a motion to authorize the special permits for this?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and Resolution Number 3, authorizing the submission of a funding application for a Smart Growth Comprehensive Planning Grant in the amount of $100,000. As you all know, we've been talking about the need to update our comprehensive, some might call it the master plan for the village, and that's really just a blueprint for where we want to be in the future regarding land use, businesses, parks, zoning issues. And one of the, you know, the good things is if we can get a grant, then the village doesn't have to pay for that. So we've put, we're going to authorize the submission of a consolidated funding application if the board votes on that. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So hopefully, we'll get that grant. The fourth resolution, authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with the Town of Eastchester, the Village of Bronxville, and Tuckahoe and Eastchester School Districts for street resurfacing. We have this IMA every year. IMA is an intermunicipal agreement, so that we work together and have savings for some of the work that we have done. So may I have a motion to execute that IMA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so Resolution Number 5, may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with the Town of Eastchester for the 2023 sidewalk and curb replacement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute another IMA with Westchester County for a library services grant in the amount of $11,562. I believe this grant is coming from the county legislator, the county legislator's office, and they, you know, every year, they support a lot of the programs. And as you guys know, we have a really robust, great library program, and our director and staff do a great job soliciting grants so that the burden of the programs doesn't fall solely on the village and the taxpayers. So thank you very much for that. May I have a motion to execute that IMA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the next resolution is also something that we do every year, to authorize an IMA with the Town of Eastchester for police mutual aid. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next resolution is authorizing the village to execute a grant with the Office of our State Senator Shelley Mayer in the amount of $10,000, with funds to be appropriated to the Tuckahoe Housing Authority as a sub-recipient for expenses related to the Tuckahoe Family Day that's hosted by the Tuckahoe Housing Authority Tenant Association. So I'll just explain this a little bit. Every year, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority funds a family day where the entire community is invited to, and this year, they were unable to fund that. So I reached out to our state senator and asked if they could help so that we could continue the tradition of this family day in Tuckahoe, and they responded with a big yes. They usually get $7,500. The mayor's office authorized giving us, reimbursing us for $10,000. So I'm happy to have informed the Tenant Association, and they were really excited that they could still have family day, and everyone is invited to come and be together. So may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute this grant opportunity?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Resolution Number 9 is, when you hear the word voucher, it's pretty much we're paying the bills that we have to pay every month. So I'm asking for a motion to authorize the approval of paying our bills in the amount A little tongue twister here.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And so that will take us to departmental reports, and our chief is here. So we'll ask him to come up to tell us how much he loved the fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Yes, so I'll start by saying the fireworks was a great show. Lots of oohs and ahs, and I think it was a real crowd pleaser. So it's just a running joke with the mayor, because my critique last year was not quite as favorable. It really was a great show, so congratulations. And that really leads me to thanking all of our public safety partners that made the night such a safe event. I want to start with the Westchester County Department of Public Safety, who had a contingent of their emergency force there. They sent explosive detection team to the site. The Real-Time Crime Center was monitoring activities from their hub up at the county police to make sure that if anything did go out of control, that they were a command and control center, and luckily, it was never needed. The Eastchester Police Auxiliaries, who have come out every year since we've been doing this for 20 years already, as well as the Eastchester Police Emergency Response Unit, who helped supplement our tactical element that was present there that night. So a big thanks to all our partners, a big thanks to my own staff, Lieutenant Andrew Zerolnick, who was the incident commander and who spends many hours in planning for this event and getting all our partners together, as well as Lieutenant Larry Rota, who was also present and helping out supervising the event. And we had about 10 members present there as well. So thank you to all our partners and to my own staff for making it a very safe and enjoyable event. And congratulations to the mayor and the village board for really putting on a great show, and of course, John Gluzi as well.
Thank you. Great, thanks, Chief. Swadish? Swadish Pashnanda is the Director of the Library.
Good evening, Mayor, good trustees and the village community. I want to start with the good news. Tuckahoe Library is going to receive $14,000 from the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, Tuckahoe for renovation of the library, and also $30,800 for the library programs. So in total, we are going to receive $70,800 in 2023, 2024. We are very thankful for the support of the community fund and also to the friends of the Tuckahoe Library, who support our all summer reading and other different wonderful programs. And friends of the library are also looking for new board members, president and the secretary. If you are interested, please call the library, or you can email me. So all the wonderful programs which library offers with their support. Tomorrow, we are having a virtual tour, American Stories, artwork from the National Gallery of Art, at Tuesday, July 11th, at 11:00 a.m. And we are having a family program, communal drumming with Nanette Garcia on Wednesday, July 12th, at 5:00 p.m. And everybody's welcome to come and join. And then we have another concert, City Winds Trio Ragtime Concert, which is July, Monday, July 17th, at 6:30 p.m. at the community center. And as it is a summertime, I know everybody likes pickle, so we are going to offer a program, How to Make Japanese Pickle, Wednesday, July 19th, at 5:30 p.m. And also craft program, Beautiful Beaded Earring, which is Monday, July 24th, at 6:00 p.m. I know the Tuckahoe community loves cooking classes, so the next cooking class is Thursday, July 27th, at 4:00 p.m. Our librarian, Maryam Safrah, is going to show how to make sushi. And then we have Hannah by Lena, which is going to be Monday, July 31st, at 4:00 p.m. So all these wonderful programs are supported by the community fund and friends of the library. And as you know, our English as second language classes are very popular, which we are still offering Wednesday, July 12th, 19th, and 26th, and 10:45. And our swing classes also on Friday, July 31st, at 6:00 p.m., and you get an opportunity to make beach bag. And our regular program, meditation, strength training, yoga, tai chi, those are our regular programs still going on. And if you haven't joined the summer reading program, please check our website and sign up for the summer reading, and something going on in the children's room. Science Heroes, Saving Earth Together, Wednesday, July 19th, at 4:00 p.m. It's going to be at the community center. And also, we have Lily Acrobat, Wednesday, July 26th, at 4:00 p.m. She's going to perform hand balancing, plate spinning, artistic cycling, ribbon dancing, and foot juggling. It's an amazing program. It was a great demand. I think this is the second time she's coming back.
Nicole's there.
And Ukulele Basics for Kids is still going on, which is going to be on Tuesday, July 11th, at 4:00 p.m., and Thursday, July 20th, at 4:00 p.m. And Miss Elaine Storytime in the Park, which is very popular. It's going on every Tuesday, July 11th, 18th, and 25th. And for teenagers, we have also babysitting certification workshop. So the kids are home, so we thought this is an interesting program. They can get the certificate, and if they want to do babysitting. It's going to be Thursday, July 13th, at 10:30 a.m. And our Dungeon and Dragon is very popular, so... And our Dungeon and Dragon is very popular, so if teens are interested, please check our website. And we have Makers Monday, which is going to be on July seventeenth at three thirty to five PM, where we have like a lot of different variety of stuff so kids can make their own whatever they like. And we are going to offer, I think, crochet classes on Monday.
Thank you.
Any questions, please give us a call. Thank you.
Thanks, Swadish.
Thank you.
No one here from DPW? No DPW report?
Frank is online. If you had any specific questions, I have one report from him, and that's it.
We have no specific questions?
Well, he's online if you do have specific questions.
We do not, but he can still give his report.
I have one.
Oh, you, okay, I'll let you.
I have one item.
Do you want to just do it right now?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Just quick, a quick update on an incident that happened last week and just kind of put something on some everyone's radar. We did have a small fire in one of our garbage trucks last week. Thankfully, it was small, it was seen early, and it was put out without any equipment damage, or, you know, more importantly, anyone got hurt. But it came from lithium ion batteries. And this is a hot topic. You're seeing this, I mean, just a simple Google search, and you will see that it's causing fires everywhere, from the improper storage to the improper disposal. So just kind of want to put it on people's radars that they do need to be recycled properly. They can bring it down to DPW for the electronic waste or Westchester County cleanup days. But it is something that's going to be, it's very important that people do this correctly. So we actually asked Chief Tween to come to our next meeting and give kind of an update on it, of the type of fires they caused, because they're extremely hot fires, and they're very difficult to put out, and just kind of the danger of those improper storage and things like that. So just if anyone has those, do not put them in your regular garbage. Make sure you recycle them properly.
Thanks. That's important. Camille, do you have anything? David, do you have anything else? Gary? Okay. So that will take us to a few dates for you to remember. Movie night was moved from June because of the air quality from the fires in Canada. So the next one will be on this Friday, July fourteenth, at sundown. And I'm sure Deputy Mayor Cronin will talk a little bit about that. And our next village board meeting, we do not have a village board meeting in August, so the next one is on September eleventh. So please make a note of that. Next village board meeting is on September eleventh at seven PM. And that will take us to our Board of Trustees' reports, and we'll start with Trustee Engelbert.
Awesome, awesome, my favorite part.
Our favorite part, too.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. Okay, so let's start with Eastchester Union Free School District. A big congratulations out to all the students who graduated from the district and those who have moved up from Waverly and Anne Hutch and Greenville and the middle school. I know it's a special moment for these children and their families. A bit of a warning, though, for all those students out there, online, and, well, perhaps not in the room, who feel like their summer reading list is oh so far from being due, it's time to crack open those books and get cooking on those summer reading requirements. And of course, our friends at the library can help kind of hook you up with books kind of for that. The next school board meeting is August twenty-third at seven thirty in the Eastchester High School Library. A welcome to the recently inducted trustees Jill Constantino, Sean Fallon, and Robert Krokowski, and congratulations to Matt Finelli on his election to the president's position. Now, in terms of the Tuckahoe Public Library, David, we saw that smirk about the pickles, so no pickles for you. Now, of course, I wanted to give a shout out, she's no longer here in the room, would have been awesome, she's still here, to the amazing session that Dr. Howell gave last month on race and genetics, a packed house in the community room. It really felt like a TED Talk, kind of in our own, our own community library, and it's just a testament to the amazing people we have kind of here in Tuckahoe and the wealth and knowledge that they can then share. As Swadish said, the friends of the public library, of course, are looking for volunteers and donations. You know the drill, it's on the website. Sign up, get involved. Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee, I attended my first TESC meeting last month, yay, that was super amazing. A few bits kind of on this one, I encourage residents, and the committee does as well, to come on down to the DPW and obtain one of the food scrap composting buckets so they can participate in that great program. Not only does it reduce kind of the fees the village has to pay for garbage removal, it also creates that mythical black gold, which is great for plants and great for the environment as well. The committee is also considering sponsoring an electric leaf blower night. I know that's a hot topic. Third rail, I could make an electric joke, but I won't. Where residents are going to have the opportunity to test out the leaf blowers. Our own Daryl Taylor has a pretty sweet electric blower kind of himself, and you might have the opportunity to actually buy the leaf blowers at the leaf blower night. Sounds like a big party to me, that's for sure. Tuckahoe Community Center, a big round of applause to John Galuzzi, who really is the mastermind behind our annual fireworks celebration. He is a true gem in our village, and I feel really lucky that we have him leading our community center. Community Center, as always, chock a block with lots of activities for young and old alike. Always a reminder that open gym most days from one thirty to four PM, you can double check that on the calendar. Basketball, foosball, all kinds of great stuff. Let's keep those little bodies and not-so-little bodies moving throughout the summer. So that's it for me, Daryl. It's all yours, kiddo.
Thank you, Trustee Engelbert, Trustee Taylor.
Okay. The Eastchester Community Action Partnership, ECAP, the Summer Enrichment Program is in full swing. They have six youth employed through the county's Summer Youth Employment Program. This program is sponsored by the county through ECAP, and local kids that need jobs can work for the local businesses, but they get paid by the county through this program. So it is an awesome program, and it's going well so far. The ECAP Back to School Supplies Distribution Week starts August fourteenth to the nineteenth. And anyone that would like to contribute supplies can contact ECAP at nine one four three three seven 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 six eight. Twenty seniors are now receiving cooked meals delivered to them every Wednesday through the partnership with Ailing Community Center. Many of you, if you've been in the village for any particular amount of time, somebody like me that's been here pretty much my whole life, was familiar with Cowers and Tuckahoe Paint and Glass. Al Cower recently passed away on July eighth. If you had the pleasure of doing business at Tuckahoe Paint and Glass, Al was a pleasant individual who went out of his way to help each and everyone who came in there. And I'm not exactly sure how long they've been there, but they've been there, I think, pretty much since I've been alive, and I'm sixty-four years old. Ninety-one years they've been in the village. And Al had recently retired not too long ago. So he will be missed. And my own father, Lucius Taylor, passed away on June twenty-fifth, Sunday morning on June twenty-fifth. Since I got involved in running for office, I've talked a lot about my mother, who was an activist in the village many years ago. And then in her later years, she had to lay down the mantle when she couldn't do it anymore. And I picked it up, and I've talked about it many times, but I just want everybody to know that my father also had a profound impact on my life. He taught me how to be a man. He taught me to be the head of my household, and he taught me to always take care of my family and to, no matter what, never back down or back up. So I thank God for my father, Lucius Taylor, and we love Pop, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Trustee Gachion.
Thank you. We will start with the History Committee. The History Committee wants to thank the Historic Preservation Commission and the Board of Trustees for their approval of the landmarks in the Washington Hotel, as well as the Ward House, the Washington Hotel being the second landmark in Tuckahoe. The social media page for the History Committee is hot. If you are not there, you are missing out. May had nine thousand two hundred and fifteen engagements, and some of their more popular ones in May were the Tuckahoe Police Remembrance Ceremony, Ward House Public Hearing, along with some of the veterans events and the Memorial Day Parade that went on. They also had fifty-five hundred reaches in June with their highest, their most popular article being on Mike Pinto, which reached sixteen hundred. So they're always posting something cool on that page. So take a look, I've learned a lot from just looking at it. And what I really like about it is they accept a lot of photos from the community with explanations about them so they can be archived. So it's a really neat, really neat site. Nick Zanzano will be presenting Tuckahoe today and yesterday at Fountains in Riverview on August thirtieth, and at the Crestwood Library on September thirtieth. Current projects they're working on are the World War II Memorial in Depot Square, as well as working collaboratively throughout Westchester County with the Westchester Historical Roundtable Revolution Revolutionary War Two-Fiftieth Project, as well as work continues with the website and the binder digitization. The History Committee meets at nine thirty to twelve at Village Hall on Wednesdays. So if you are around, come on by. They're also looking to bolster their yearbook collection because there are some missing. So if you have any, bring those in with you. We will move on to the Historical Preservation Commission. Their last meeting was held on May twenty-fourth. The commission held a very, it was standing room only at that meeting, where they discussed two-thirty White Plains Road, the Ward House as a landmark, and their next meeting will be here on July twentieth. Next, we'll move on to the Tuckahoe Beautification Commission. And last month was the first month I was able to meet in person with all the members, many of whom I had already known, but it was good to see the group together. And to best describe this update, I'm going to paraphrase the nineteen ninety-one hit Summertime from DJ Jazzy Jeff and the Fresh Prince, where... But since it's summertime, time to sit back and unwind, as you put your car on cruise and lay back. They want me to let you know to take a look at the beautiful hanging baskets. So as you're hanging back in your car cruising in summertime, take a look at those hanging baskets and the various planters and plantings and the various pockets of the village. This is all thanks to the Beautification Committee and, of course, the DPW. And they also want you to notice the aesthetic improvements in front of the library and community center, which were done through grants. Soon, we'll be looking up and seeing the Christmas wreaths. So if you have not taken the opportunity to donate to the Beautification Commission, please do so. And also, we may be having a fundraiser here shortly, so keep your eyes open for that. And lastly, Veterans Report. Over the past month, things have been relatively quiet for our Tuckahoe and Eastchester veterans. There was a small group of us who had graduated from PGA Hope, which was a very cool event, coupled with the PGA and the Veterans Administration. Another class will be offered in the fall. So what they do is they help teach veterans how to golf, regardless of any physical or mental impairments or disabilities. So it's really adaptive sports for everyone, so it's a really cool event. Take a look at it if you can. And lastly, on July twenty-first at seven PM, the New York Department of the American Legion is hosting a Freedom Concert Tribute to Military Heroes. This will be held at the county center, and tickets can be purchased at Ticketmaster. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Gachion, Deputy Mayor Cronin?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. From the seniors, we want to thank the police and the police department for hosting an outrageously good luncheon for the Tuckahoe seniors. This was probably the best attended event of the entire year for the Tuckahoe seniors, and they just love having the police officers there, so they want to express their thanks. Just a reminder for anyone who does attend the seniors that they do close in the month of August, but for the month of July, they have a few interesting things happening. There's a series of painting workshops, a cooking demo with our favorite mayor on the twenty-second, and then a closing luncheon on July twenty-seventh. Just a note, as the mayor said, movie night is this Friday. Again, we're going to be trying for Super Mario Brothers. So unfortunately, two weeks ago, we had to postpone because of the smoke conditions from the fires in Canada. I got a few questions about this. I just, so that everybody knows, there were a lot of warnings issued by the county and by the state about the air quality, and I cannot justify, when things get labeled as hazardous or extremely hazardous, I cannot justify asking families to bring young children out or asking our DPW workers to be out working in the outside. So I will cancel in case that does happen. Hopefully, it does not happen again this summer. So we are all set for this Friday. If you've not been to one of our movie nights, they are a lot of fun. We have free snacks and beverages, and it's just a great time. It's open to everybody. Bring your family, bring your friends, bring a blanket or some chairs, and just kind of come and hang out. It's a great time, so we hope to see you all there. Oh, sorry, thank you, it's a good question. It's in Main Street Park, right on the corner of Marble Dale in Maine. And the movies start at eight thirty. We get a lot of questions about that, too. I know that is late for young children, but the sun doesn't go down before that, so I can't start before the sun goes down. So it's got to be eight thirty. Bring the kids in their pajamas. Very often, we have a whole bunch of them sleeping out on the floor in blankets and sleeping bags. Really, it is such a nice time, especially when the weather is good. Moving on to the Zoning and Planning Board, the zoning and planning board both each have these same two properties, twenty Marble Dale Road, which is a return of an amendment to a special permit to expand an existing business, and fifty Columbus Avenue, which is a return for a special permit for a cell tower at fifty Columbus. So both of these are just returns, everything else has been adjourned. The Planning Board meeting is next Tuesday, July eighteenth, and the Zoning Board meeting is this coming Wednesday, the twelfth, both of them at seven PM. A special note, both the zoning and planning board, and please, please do listen, if you're at all interested in getting involved, and we really do need people to get involved, the zoning board and the planning board are both looking for ad hoc members. So ad hoc members are like alternates, and they serve, they come to the meetings, and they observe, and they participate, but they don't vote unless there is somebody missing and they need somebody to vote on a specific issue. It's a really good way to be, to come in as an ad hoc or an alternate, it's a good way to kind of get acclimated to what the two committees do. So our zoning, our zoning board, they look at the code, and when people request an amendment to the code, they make a determination whether that amendment is appropriate. And then the planning board looks at, you know, the overall aesthetics of the village and looks at a proposal to see how that proposal will fit into the overall plan for the village. So if you are interested, I can give you more information. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me. You can reach out to me via social media, or my village email, or on the village website. So the only true qualifications is that you must be eighteen, and you must live in the village of Tuckahoe. Right, is that right? Yeah. And... Everything else you can learn. It would be great if we had people who are interested in plannings, urban planning, or real estate, or law, or like maybe architecture or own a small business, but you don't have to have those qualifications. You can learn a lot of it on site, and being an ad hoc member is a really good way to learn. So if you're interested, please do not hesitate. Reach out and give us a call. We would love to hear from you. So those are that. I want to also say thank you to John Galuzzi for the fireworks, and DPW for all the hard work for setup and breakdown, and the police who make us feel safe every single day. The police also for Cone with a Cop, that was a great event, and that's one of my favorite because it comes with free ice cream, and who doesn't love that? August first is National Night Out with the Police, is that right, chief? Yeah, so it's August first. Okay, so August first is National Night Out with the Police. This is another really great event put on by our police department. And so if you're around and you're on a vacation, definitely come on down. They have some great events and great vendors there, so do come by and hang out with us and the... So do come by and hang out with us and the police. All right, that's it. Thank you, everybody. Oh, wait, before I go. Sorry. The Village Board would like to express their condolences to a couple of families who lost loved ones this month. As Trusty Taylor said, Albert Cower, from Cower Paint and Glass. We'd like to express our condolences to the family of Elfi Ferretti, who was a longtime resident before moving to Eastchester, and the mother-in-law of our own, Jackie Ferretti. Sebastian de Mateo, sorry, de Mayo, who lived on Fisher Avenue and a longtime resident, a lifelong resident here in the Village of Tuckahoe. And of course, to Trusty Taylor and his whole family in the loss of his father, Lucius. So we send our condolences and love to all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would just also like to add to that, you know, we've had, it seems like, a season of people passing. We also had our Planning Board member, Paul Wolfson's mother pass away. So our condolences go out to Paul Wolfson as well. So I'd like to go over a few things. But first, I want to just highlight, you know, tonight we had the Tuckahoe Kids Table, Hudson Axelbaum, and Renee, Dr. Renee Howell talk about the Tuckahoe Challenge and the proceeds to both of those, you know, those events and organizations going to EMS. And I think this last couple of weeks, or last few weeks, have really highlighted how EMS, our police department, our fire department are just so instrumental to everything in our community. And unfortunately, we had two incidents where EMS, the police department, the fire department was needed. And we do have one of our residents here who will, you know, speak about his experience with that. But I received two letters that I'd like to share with the community about the services that, you know, two residents had with our police and EMS and fire departments. I'll read it to you. It says, "Dear Mayor Andino, on Friday, June 23rd," this is the first letter, "the entire ceiling in my living room collapsed without warning while I was sitting in the living room. Even though I was very stunned and dazed, as soon as I was able to get up off the floor and was safely in the hallway, I called the police department. Officer Brian Madden answered my call, took down all my information, advised me he would contact the fire department and EMS, and reassured me that I would be all right. In less than five minutes, Sergeant James Kennedy and Officer Steve McKenn arrived, proceeded to handle everything calmly and proficiently. At this point, I was near hysteria, and both of them had me sit in the stairwell and had me examined by the EMTs. Unfortunately, I did not get the EMTs' names. I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the officers, the firemen, and the EMTs. Their professionalism and courtesies were beyond exemplary. Having lived in Tuckahoe for 30 years, I have always had the utmost appreciation for the police department. Since this horrific event occurred, I am even more grateful for all of them." And Donna Semenera, who lives in the building that I live in, left me a note under my door because she just felt so compelled to tell me that she was so grateful for the services that she received. So I want to thank the chief, thank the officers who attended to her, thank the fire department and the EMS workers. And when I contacted the deputy chief of EMS to say, you know, "thank you", he said, "we don't need thanks. This is what we're supposed to do." So it just really speaks, it's a testament to who they are. And I'm really grateful that we are supporting them in the way that we are with, through the Tuckahoe Kids Table and through the Tuckahoe Road Race. And actually, our, another resident who's also a friend of mine, Jack Tuber, sent me an email, and he's here with us tonight. And I will have him come and speak if he would like to, once I read his letter. He wrote to me, "Dear Mayor Andino, I'm writing to let you know that two weeks ago, on the night of June 15th, I suffered a major heart attack, and members of our first responder community literally brought me back from the dead. I wouldn't be here today to write this letter without the valiant, determined, and above all, professional work of an Eastchester volunteer ambulance crew led by Kerry Conrad, as well as critical contributions from the Eastchester Fire and Tuckahoe Police Departments. In short, my heart stopped three times between my house on Sagamore Road and Lawrence Hospital. Each time it did, Kerry and her crew revived me with increasingly powerful shocks to my heart. By the time they delivered me to New York Presbyterian Westchester Hospital, I was awake and transferred to the ER team there. They continued to work on stabilizing me. A few hours later, they sent me to Columbia's Cardiac CCU. Looking back on that night, I'm impressed by the responsiveness of the team. My girlfriend, Edie Dickman, dialed 911 at 9:52 PM. Four minutes later, the team from EVAC arrived and began the critical work that saved me. I was at the hospital at 10:09 PM. In addition to Ms. Conrad, the EVAC crew consisted of Brianna Costa, Hunter Koch, Christopher Herrick, and Nicholas Rubio. The Eastchester Fire Department team consisted of Dominic Dirienzo and Paul Kendall. He obviously did all his homework. Unfortunately, I don't have the names of the two police officers from the Tuckahoe Police Department who were there to first, who first arrived. One of them literally propped me up while we waited. I thought you should know, the real heroes walk among us, and because of their efforts, so do I. And I'm forever grateful." And that came from Jack Tuber, who is here with us tonight. And I'm really grateful that we had such, you know, such a professional and compassionate team to just respond to the needs of the residents. And when I spoke with Jack, when he, you know, sent me a message saying that this happened, I was, you know, just looking at him and realizing that I might not have spoken to him. I may never have known and seen him again. And so I'm really grateful that you're here, Jack, and you're welcome to come up and address the board or the community if you'd like.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees, thanks for this opportunity. It's going to take me a minute to get myself together here.
Take your time.
The story was the story, and that happened. And it's crazy that I'm here, less than a month later, to talk to you about that. Even more crazy was when I found out that the Volunteer Ambulance Corps is largely volunteer and hardly any paid paramedics, and that they're entirely donation-funded and grants, and basically the insurance billings they get for taking people like me to the hospital. So it was great to hear Hudson, you know, at the age of eight, already on the program. You know, certainly, Dr. Howell's, you know, contribution of the road race money. And I have committed to raise a fair amount of money from, my work colleagues all wanted to send me gift baskets. And I said, "No, no, no. We're going to make a contribution to the Volunteer Ambulance Corps." Because they literally pulled me back from the dead. So, yeah. Everybody, take care of your hearts. Listen to your cardiologist and your doctor, but really, when you see those people doing their jobs. And I went back and I thanked them, or I tried to thank them. I don't know how you thank somebody who saves your life. And I got very much the same, "Well, this is just what we do." And thank God for that. So thanks for this opportunity, and thanks to the volunteers, the ambulance folks, the fire department, and the police as well. You guys are right there.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Yeah, so we really do have an amazing police department, fire department, EMS. And I just want to reiterate and stress that if you are able to, even if it's, you know, $5, $10, every little bit really does help. And I think that if, once people are learning that the EMS department is, really relies on donations, many people have reached out to me and have said, "I didn't know that. I'd like to give. What do I do?" So you can go to eastchesterems.com, I believe. They also are on social media, on Facebook and on Instagram. And I think they're @eastchesterems. So look out for them and thank, and you know, just when you see them, thank them. I wanted to address some misinformation that was passed around on social media regarding migrants. Oh, I actually forgot something. I needed, we have some additional resolutions I'm going to address now, David. Sorry about that. So may I have two motions? One, to authorize the following vehicles as surplus for sale, a 2017 Ford Explorer, police utility four-door SUV with a mileage of 68,548, and an AM, General Humvee, four-door, four-wheel drive with utility bed with a mileage of 4,996 miles. May I have a motion to surplus these for sale?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those are some additional resolutions that were not on the agenda, so I'm glad I didn't miss it. So the statements that were made on social media referred to asylum seekers as illegals staying at the Spring Hill Suites. So first and foremost, I like to address the issue of calling people, human beings, illegals. No human being is illegal. So that's thing one. The other thing is that there are no asylum seekers or migrants or immigrants staying at the Spring Hill Suites. I contacted the manager myself, and I confirmed that. So those are not true statements that are made. And when you see these things on social media, this is how misinformation just starts to circulate and things just get really nutty. So I want to, I want to just reiterate, we've had these kinds of things happen in the past. I haven't heard about it too much lately. But just to remind people that if you don't know something, it's 100% factual. Don't repeat it. Don't post it. It's not helpful. It's not productive. And sometimes, it's just actually hateful. And so when I received this message, I contacted the hotel and asked them, you know, "Do you have anyone?" And he said, "No, in fact, we have the, we have the," it's escaping me right now. "We have the, that needs exempt, tax exempt." The National Guard. Thank you. The National Guard is staying there for 90 days. That's who's staying there. But if there were, you know, there was a statement made that there were women walking down the street with luggage and that they were illegals staying at the hotel. So I'm just going to reiterate, it's not true. If there are people in the community that are coming here as asylum seekers or migrants, I've gotten a couple of emails from residents saying that they're concerned that there will be people coming here. And my response was that I have been in touch with the county executive because oftentimes, if they're coming from the city, he will be the first to know. And then he will speak to municipalities. Many and most of those communities that have received migrants and asylum seekers have agreed to it. They have volunteered to do it. Our hotel is not likely to be tapped because we are at capacity. And we're also a little more expensive than, say, the Ramada Inn in Yonkers. But this is somewhat upsetting because it speaks to the hate that we carry sometimes and that we have to be, we have to sort of pause sometimes and think about what it is that we're saying and what we're doing, and how that impacts the world. Not just those specific people or the people that you want to read this, but the world in general. So I'm just going to say it again, there are no migrants staying at the Spring Hill Suites. I have been in touch with Mayor Adams. There was a conference call with all of the mayors in New York, where he talked to mayors and asked who would volunteer, where they were. And there was discussion about the communities that could absorb additional people, and we were not one of them. That does not mean that I am against migrants coming and receiving the supports and services, which is why I'm supporting Jihan's efforts to support those families who are coming to the US seeking safety often. And when I spoke to the director at what was renamed, the Ramada was renamed Plaza Esperanza, she said, "I've never directed a shelter where people just came asking for work." She said, "That is the first thing out of their minds. They have uprooted their lives. They did not want to do this. They had to do this. And out of desperation, they came here with nothing." So I am really imploring our community to remind ourselves how, what a big heart we have and to give to these families as much as we can and to be kind to each other. So that's all on that. I also wanted to thank the library because I called Elaine Provenzano and asked her if she would do Storytime because there are a lot of children that are under the age of four. And when I went to visit, there are, as I said, 100 families there, 155 adults, and there were 80 children, which really surprised me. Most of the people who are there are families. You know, families with children and some families with the, where the mother is pregnant. So that's important. So Elaine and Swarish are already on it. They're putting books together to bring to the children. And we are working out Storytime, and some other community members are asking, "How can they help?" So we're putting together some volunteers to go and help. The other thing I wanted to just sort of stress, you know, we have had a lot of people pass away. Our very own Darryl Taylor, Trusty Taylor, his father passed away. And I'm pretty close to Darryl. And I just wanted to recount the story where I went to visit him at the hospital when he fell ill. And I said to Darryl, you know, "Finally, I get to meet him" because he wouldn't let me come and see him at the house. But I'm going to just show up at the hospital. He doesn't have a choice. So I show up, and he was, you know, just a very lively person at 91 years old, very energetic. And he says to me that I should order Darryl to make sure he goes home. And I said, "Well, I can't order him." Of course you can. You're the mayor. You can order him to make sure I go home. So I did, and Darryl took him home. And so he was able to, was able to pass away in his home on his own terms. He lived life on his own terms, and I really admired that about him. And I saw the love in this family. There were things that he would ask Darryl to do, that Darryl did exactly the way his father did, where if my mother asked me to do it and she wasn't watching, I wouldn't do it exactly that way because it was just too much. But, you know, that just showed the love that Trusty Taylor had for his father. And I just wanted to offer my condolences again to you, Trusty Taylor.
Thank you.
And I think, let's see, I think that's all that I had that I wanted to report on. And so this takes us to the second opportunity to address the board on any agenda items or no agenda items. You're welcome to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Board of Trustees.
My name is Irene Tiara.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to address you with regard to 21 Spalding Road. I wrote this letter to you guys.
We've received the letter.
But you might look at it to cover me in front of it.
I have, I have one in front of me, but that's perfectly fine. Yep, we're good. You can have, give him one.
Yeah, I'll take it. It's fine.
I don't like paper. Try to avoid paper.
I know. Believe me. So first off, I just want to say that I, after being at this meeting, I am so proud to be living in Tuckahoe, listening to you speak, all of your reports, the people that are so giving, everybody who's working so hard for a sense of community. And one of the reasons that I liked being in Tuckahoe, as a fairly new member, I moved here about three years ago. I was originally a member, a resident of Westchester, grew up and raised, born and raised here in the Yonkers area of Westchester. Went to Yonkers Public Schools, Sacred Heart High School, St. Anne, I mean, from that section. Never really was familiar with this side of the area. And found out after living over 36 years in Connecticut in small towns, because I really like the country and the feel of a small-town hamlet. So I moved to Tuckahoe, and the flavor of Tuckahoe is my biggest concern right now because it is a hamlet. The small-town feeling here and the, just the way you've all expressed yourselves here tonight is exactly what I would love to preserve. And one of the reasons that I would like to speak to you tonight is with regard to the building that was formerly the Sterling Bank, and they're turning into 150 apartments. They're all very small. I mean, they're like between 500 or 550 and 1,000 square feet, and not even. They're under 1,000 square feet. I think the largest one is 950. Those are small for 150 apartments. They're talking about bringing in scooters, they're talking about 150 parking spaces. And this is, it's a lot of, it's going to increase the density of population and the bulk of the impact is going to be on Tuckahoe. One of the, there are several things I wanted to address. I mean, most of the points were made in this letter. But the main issues that I wanted to address tonight that I feel are salient in the order of priority is the traffic congestion and the pedestrian safety. The noise issues, especially late at night on the weekends. I'm a resident of Riverview, so I live directly across the street of that building on Yonkers Avenue. That is a Tuckahoe structure, right? And that has been, I mean, I bought my condo and it wasn't there. And when I went to move in, it was being constructed. And I have to say, that was really heartbreaking because it's the only view I had and it was of the Bronx River. Now everything's going to be of buildings. I have no view whatsoever from my window. That said, it would have been nice if they fixed it already and got it done because it is in our face. It's in my face for sure. So I was wondering what's going on with that. That alone is concerning to me because it is a Tuckahoe concern. It's a Tuckahoe building. The traffic on Yonkers Avenue there and that turn that you make over there. And it's on the corner of Yonkers and Scarsdale Road, directly across from where we are. As you can see, there's no hiding it, I am a senior citizen. And trying to cross the streets is crazy. If you have any kind of, and it's, you don't even have to have a handicap. But even if you do, it's really scary. As a senior trying to cross the street with those lights and they're not timed well, there's no crossing things that work. It's very difficult. That's a bad spot right there, right? Point made.
So Ms. Piro, I don't mean to cut you off, but just want to remind you that the time limit for speakers coming up is three minutes. And I'm okay with you going a little bit longer. It's okay, it's okay.
Then you can move on. The noise issues I just wanted to address because that building has created an echo chamber. The emergency response, since we're closest, Tuckahoe's closest, will this eventually tax our resources? Will our emergency vehicles, if there is an emergency on the Yonkers side for that building or at the Wicked Wolf or right there, are our vehicles the one that are going to respond? Okay, so the next thing is, what is your position on the project given the issues that I talked about in the letter that I sent you? I am concerned mainly about the access to Eastchester grocery stores, gas, medical pharmacies, any kind of amenities, necessities that everybody's going to need. Going, and it really is, you have to go down Scarsdale Road, across the Bronx River, which is another situation, all the way to Central to get to a grocery store. Or you have to go all the way up through Main Street and over to Eastchester in order to get to a grocery store. So there have been a tremendous amount of accidents on the Bronx River. I've gotten caught on there because the traffic lights, Scarsdale Road's all backed up. You can't get across because of the traffic that's backed up, especially during rush hour. Yonkers said that the Bronx River Parkway is not a concern for the new building. Their engineers examined it. They did a traffic study, which I feel is inappropriate. It's based on poor research. It's, the research is not accurate. They're not comparing the current traffic pattern that we have now to what might be with 150. They're comparing it to when it was an active building, to when it would be a residential building at that same time, saying that the traffic pattern would be, in fact, less than. I mean, the traffic.
The flow, the traffic?
Yes, not just the flow, but the dense, the amount of traffic. And the flow is horrible because the lights need to be redone and we have to do something about it. I would like to know why. We haven't heard anything, I don't know how we can communicate with the community to find out what's going on, you know, Tuckahoe's perspective and so forth. I don't know how to communicate with the community at large, but I do know this. I am not the only one who's concerned about this. I spoke with many residents on the Yonkers side who are also concerned and also near the Eastchester end who are also concerned. I said I live in Riverview, but I'm only speaking as an individual. But I know that Riverview has expressed concern about this as well. To Yonkers, I expressed my concerns to Yonkers and to Tuckahoe. I just would like to know why we can't work together to address the problems of our two communities.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming forward. No, 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 it's okay, it's okay. I did receive your letter and since you said you would come to the board meeting, I figured I would because you didn't leave a phone number, so I couldn't call you.
It was on the top of the letter.
Oh, duh. Oh, no, it's not. It's your email, it's your email.
I thought I put it on the.
Yeah, no, it's not there.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. So just what I'd like to ask you to do, and if John or David could give Ms. Piro my phone number, my cellphone number before you leave, I'd like for you to call me so that you can come in and I could talk to you more at length to what are some of the things that we've done. Just to let you know, it's, this is why I tell people, it's really important to watch meetings or to attend meetings because the information that you get sometimes, it's cumulative. Things are happening, they're changing, and we give information at meetings that sometimes people don't watch. And I'll get a ton of emails from people asking me about information that we've directly addressed at a meeting. And it's very hard to get information out to the community at large, so this is the forum for that. So just so you are aware, there are a few things that we have done. We sent letters to the planning board in Yonkers when it was first going to be a medical building, voicing our concerns about the traffic and the traffic study. We also sent another letter once we realized it was going to be changed to apartments, which if you ask me, in my opinion, that's better than the medical building that they were going to have because at least it's stable people that are there. We shared the traffic study with our engineers.
They're rentals.
They're rentals. But. They could be, but they're a transient in Tuckahoe. So let me just, let me, let me just finish. So we shared our traffic study with our engineers also. And you're right, there are some holes in the traffic study itself, but overall, our engineer said, for the most part, it's pretty accurate. But for traffic studies, they're pretty subjective. So, you know, you could find one engineer to say it's all good and another one to say it's not. So we're, so we also had, please, just, I let you speak, now you just listen.
That data was not.
Now, I let you speak, now you just listen. Let me finish. So our building department contacted the Yonkers Planning Board or the Yonkers Department almost every day when this was happening, when it initially started. So it's not like we had not tried to reach out to them. In the end, Yonkers is going to make their decision. And we pretty much know that the decision is they're going to do this. So we have to find ways on our end to try to alleviate some of these concerns. And some of the concerns that you're talking about are not new. Some of them are infrastructure issues that we've had for decades that now this board is trying to address with our village, you know, staff to try and alleviate some of the issues with our traffic lights. So we've upgraded several of our traffic lights. The one on Main Street and Cameron and Fairview, the one on Fisher and Columbus, Fisher and Marble Dale, to try to help alleviate some of that. I mean, we're doing all that we can. It took a trip with the chief and our village administrator to say, okay, where can we make some write-on reds maybe so that we can move the flow of traffic? So on our end, we're trying to do all of the things. You made a very good point in your letter that the Depot Square, that's our beast. That's where we're really, we were able to fix some of the other lights, but that is really the big one. And it's going to cost us a lot of money. So we've put in a grant for $2 million from our congressman's office to try to get the entire Depot Square upgraded, including the traffic, the traffic lights there. So those are some of the things that we've done. And then we also met with the developer and said, we recognize, because they stated in their traffic study that our lights, our traffic lights, there were issues with that. So we recognize that that's true. It's a big project to try to accomplish and the village can't afford it. So we were trying to get grants and we also talked to the developer and asked, would they assist? Would they provide financial support to help with the upgrade so that it would alleviate some of the congestion and some of the traffic? So those are some of the things that we have done. But just in the interest of time, I want to ask that you come in and talk with us because that would be great for us to do. Again, I did get a message from someone saying, you know, there's someone that posted on Facebook that Tuckahoe Board should get up off their butts and do something. So I just want to say that we have, we've gotten up off our butts and we have done a lot to try to address this issue, understanding that Yonkers is going to do what Yonkers wants to do. And we can bang our heads against the wall and try to force them to do, but we can.
Sounds like a David and Goliath situation.
But we can do some things on our end to try to address the problem. And I'm grateful that when we contacted the developer, that they were even willing to come in and said, yes, we will help fund it. Tell us once you get that plan in place. So that, those are some of the things that we have done. So I'm going to ask that you take my number before you leave now and give me a call tomorrow and we'll schedule time for you to come in and I'd be more than happy to hear some other ideas you might have that might help.
How much time do you have?
Thank you so much for coming.
Well, thank you so much.
Get my number there. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Sure. I'm sorry, can you speak when you get to the mic?
My name is Margaret Clancy, I'm actually president of the board at Riverview.
I think you came and met with us about the flooding, yes.
And I'm glad to hear that you're working on the traffic because it's been a problem before this development. We all know how it is and I faced that traffic light too. And also I wrote a letter in support of the grant for the new light system.
Right, right, thank you.
How long before you would know the outcome of that?
So I think, David, you contacted them last week, right? So we don't know yet.
I don't know what the time.
Yeah, we keep pestering them, you know, government moves slowly. But we are really on top of it.
That would be a big help probably.
It would be, it would be a big help. And that was part of the discussion with Congressman Bowman's office, letting them know that we know this is going to happen. This building is going to be built. We need some assistance on our end to try to alleviate some of the problems.
Yeah, and when you talked about paying attention to meetings in the last, just so you know, in the last Yonkers Planning Board meeting, they said, "Traffic is a Tuckahoe problem." So, and I know you guys are dealing with it and it's, I think, a lot of, from Crestwood all the way up to Eastchester and all of you here travel that road all the time, so you know we're worried about it.
Yeah, I will say that the upgraded lights that we've had, I've been testing them. I teased the chief and I teased the village administrator. I'm going to go down and check it out and it really is much better. Like, I was shocked when I got to the light at, I live on Fairview and was trying to get to the gym really fast because of course, you know, I wait till the last minute. And when I got to the light, it's sort of like, there was no one on the, you know, the east and west sides and it just, it changed. And I was like, wow, this is like magic. So we're just hoping that we have more of that with the Depot Square project and the traffic lights there, if we can get this funding from Bowman's. And thank you so much for your letter because it was very helpful to get letters from the residents.
And I just wanted to say to the chief too, thank you very much. We did the shoot for FBI Most Wanted at Riverview, which was really exciting. But when I went out that night and I saw how many police were involved, I was like, oh no. But that was great and I think it was Town Hall that sent the scout down to Riverview and we had a very exciting day doing it.
Very nice.
And it would be cool if Tuckahoe was a film-friendly town.
We are a film-friendly town and if you go on our website, you will see that. We do reach out to try to get producers and filmmakers to come here. And we have several, a lot of filming done here, so.
We appreciate a Town Hall vouching for us there because it was cool. Okay, thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on, oh, okay, we have one more?
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
She's my memory bank and I'm trying to remember what I wanted to say. Beverly Christian and I'm at 72 Main Street. And as a senior citizen who is very much developing a lot of senior skills, I just want to know what resources I have for activities, support that are in the village without, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a car, so, and so I can't drive to some of the bigger towns and cities where they have a lot of activities. So.
So I will let Deputy Mayor Cronin talk to you a little bit about that. She is the liaison to the seniors.
So I will bring you down one day to the Tuckahoe seniors. We have really robust programming. It's really, it's creative and a lot of fun. They do different events from luncheons to arts and crafts, to trips to like the Mystic Aquarium. Yeah, they like to go gambling. They do a lot of dancing, they have a lot of luncheons, and then there's a lot of, they have exercise programs every Tuesday and Thursday. It's walkable to your home. Everything in Tuckahoe, the nice thing about Tuckahoe, it's only a mile square, right? So everything is walkable. It's at the Assumption Church and Father Fata Hall. It's $50 to join for the entire year and you get all that programming except for like the very special events. All that programming comes to you for free. So you should definitely come. I will walk you down there one day if you'd like to come with me. They start at nine o'clock in the morning on Tuesdays and Thursdays and run until 2:00 or 2:30. They also do different kind of programs, like they'll do, the history committee will come and do presentations or they'll have somebody from the county legislator's office come to talk about fishing, fishing, not fishing for fish, but fish, online fishing or safety, cybersecurity kind of safety. And so this is really robust programming and we're really lucky to have them. I just want to give a shout out to the Tuckahoe seniors, we're the only senior center still running throughout the entire pandemic. They moved online immediately and they were one of the only online programs for seniors at all during the pandemic. And then they went back almost immediately as soon as they could. And they have a lot of great programs. Plus, they helped the mayor, you know, do vaccinations during the height of the pandemic. So like really lucky to have them. But by all means, I think that's a really great place for you to start. The other thing that you should know is that Tuckahoe is a senior village. About a year and a half ago, we got special status through the county and these are a set of programs that are available for seniors to help them age in place. And so there is different programming available through the county and this includes legal help in terms of like what to do about estate planning and living trusts and et cetera. And I can hook you up with like events through them too. So by all means, let's reach out. But I will, I'm going to bring you down to the seniors next week maybe even.
Very cool. Cansy urge service. Thank you, guys.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, right.
Samantha Christian, 72 Main Street. I know Shiloh Church came here and gave their presentation. Looks like we had the same idea at the same time. But I know that a lot of COVID benefit programs have ended and extensions have ended or will end sometime this year. And I would, and I think all those benefits were great, from free provided hand sanitizers and masks and, you know, public transportation and food and whatever. So it looks like all of those programs are going to end without any alternative or anything in place to maintain it. And I think those programs should be preserved. I don't know if they're, if we can get a grant to maintain them, but that's what I have been thinking about recently.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I'd like to make everyone aware of is we are in talks with our state Senator Shelley Mayor's office. They are, we are trying to work out a mobile office hour day where they would be here and they support a lot of our residents with those very issues that you're talking about. And so we just, a lot of times when we get contacted, we serve as the connector to, you know, to our county legislator, our state senator, our assembly person, our congressman. And so we are looking at having them maybe possibly even in Village Hall so that if somebody comes and they have a concern, like the ones that you're mentioning, that we can refer them to the state senator's office right here in the village.
And there are a lot of churches here. I know churches, they don't pay any property taxes or any taxes. But I was also thinking that maybe they could be converted into maybe low-income housing or. low-income housing or homeless shelters or something each one to help, not only help with migrants, but people who are living in poverty who need a place to, a place to stay also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Elaine.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Elaine.
I'm Robinzono, 11 River Street. First of all, again, my condolences, Daryl, to you and your family.
Thank you.
Beautiful family. It's a great loss. But I also wanted to, again, I said 11 River Street, so I understand. I'm at that light. You didn't mention that light.
I'm not quite there yet.
But you just said two minutes, yes, and we're.
We're not quite there.
We get to look at, at the train for a while. But I also wanted to say, it was a lot worse 50 years ago when Borough's Welcome and Revlon Healthcare were in the house and both the Growlers parking lot and where the River View is was also a parking lot. So both of those parking lots emptied at 5:00. There was a whistle that blew. And so it was quite a lot of traffic at that time. I'm sure we have, I'm going to talk to Nick. I know we've got some pictures of that. But I primarily wanted to come up as a resident to thank everyone for those beautiful fireworks. We are so lucky in Tuckahoe to have these fireworks. I remember them as a child, with the 300th back in the early 60s, with the horses coming down Main Street. And they were every year, and then there was an accident and they had Daryl shaking his head, right?
Yep.
They had to, you were probably too young, but your brothers would remember. And they ended, and then, isn't it wonderful that they were brought back for the centennial? And this beautiful tradition continues. And everybody in the neighborhood, as a neighbor of this happening right behind us on that street, I heard the street sweepers, street cleaners moving at like 11:30 that night. And you would never know that all those people that were there and that took place. So thank you for the police, to everybody who, to John Galuzzi for running it, all of you who participated in making it, it's just, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do you have anyone else, anyone on Zoom that would like to address the board? Okay?
Good evening, my name is Mary O'Donnell. I thank you for the opportunity to address the board under that one Scarsdale Road in River View.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm formerly a 40-year resident of the town of Eastchester before selling our house in the town. And I moved to River View about 10 years ago. So I have to say that as a longtime town resident, going back to when COVID was there and white was there and David Pinto was elected as the representative of Tuckahoe to the Eastchester Town Board, I can honestly say, based on my long experience, I have always known that elected officials do seriously consider any draft issues brought to your attention by residents. And that is just borne through this evening, based on the comments that we've made to earlier residents of River View who spoke on the issue of traffic. As was said, the proposal at the Boras Sterling Bag is for 106 to 150 apartments. And as has been said, the issue that really does raise the issue of what the impact is going to be on traffic, and not just for folks like myself who, you know, live on Scarsdale or Scarsdale Road, like, you know, as was said, going up to Columbus, to Maine, up to Winter Hill, up to White Plains Road. My concern is that that many apartments and 156 parking spaces is really going to have an impact, as has been said, on the village. And I know that a traffic study was shown by the developer that was presented to the Yonkers Planning Board. I understand, as I said earlier, the village officials have looked at this traffic study. So what I would request is that the village officials take a second look at the traffic study. Because it has, it's been raised in, the question has been raised as to its accuracy. I would ask that you take a second look at it. And if on a second look and a review, village officials can say to the residents, you know what? We're okay with it. It's not going to have a serious impact, it's going to be okay. That will certainly alleviate much of the concerns that we have regarding, regarding the impact on traffic. Now, the other point I want to make is that we know that that traffic, traffic study that went to the Yonkers Planning Board has to be accepted by the Yonkers Planning Board. And I don't see that they've taken it seriously enough. And I'm so pleased to hear that the mayor and village officials are working with the Yonkers Planning Board. Because they are the ones, as we know, who are going to have to address the issue of traffic. And my likely comment is that I was really surprised that this development got through Yonkers City Council with a negative declaration on December. Traffic obviously is going to be impacted. And why the Yonkers Planning Board and the city council decide to issue a positive declaration so that this whole traffic issue could be really studied, understand, mitigation actions could be taken. So I just want to sum up by saying I really appreciate your time this evening. I know it's getting late and look forward to a really positive treatment of this problem. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. I just want to address two things. I will take you up on taking a second look at the traffic study. I'm not so sure that even if Tuckahoe disagrees that the traffic study is valid, that we can stop this project. That's thing one. The other thing is when you said that we're working with the Yonkers Planning Board, actually, we have been trying to contact them. And what I said was, we called them almost every day when this was like in the height of the planning stages, without success of getting people. So that's, that's different than working with the planning board. We're actually not working with the planning board. We have been trying to reach Yonkers to have a conversation. And so with.
Yes, I thank you very much for that clarification because I thought there was communication. But to your first point, the issue is not yourself this project. That is not your own stuff. The issue is how to mitigate the adverse impacts that this, that 150 apartments and 150 parking spaces is going to have on traffic.
Right.
In the village, in the village of Tuckahoe. And what my view of it was this, that with the support of the village officials, which I see we're getting, and thank you, I really appreciate it. And as I said originally, you guys would be there, of course. But so, so I would hope that, based on what you just said, going forward, that there can be a mechanism put in place so that there is good communication between the village officials and the planning board. I'm very disappointed to hear that the Yonkers Planning Board is, am I using the word correctly, is a, of the village officials.
Well, what I would say is that we have sent letters and we have made phone calls and we have not had a return call. That's what I would say. And so as far as, and this will be the last point, and I would welcome One River View, if they want to come and talk with me, we can talk some more. But as I said, what we're doing is we're trying to mitigate on our end the best way that we can without having to rely on Yonkers. Because if we don't get cooperation, which I'm not saying we will not definitively, we have to figure out on our end, what can we do? And so I outlined when I spoke earlier, what are some of the things that we are doing with regard to the traffic light updates, talking to the developer about helping to fund that because that's what's going to be an expense for the village. And we have submitted our concerns, our voiced concerns to Yonkers. So on that note, we will put that to bed. I will ask that you contact me, Ms. Piero and Ms. O'Donnell, if you'd like to join in that conversation. I welcome you to come in and join in on that conversation. Okay? You're welcome. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to address the board? Okay. So I think that is it. On that note, I will just remind everyone, there is no board meeting in August. So if you show up here, you'll be here alone. September 11th, 7:00 PM, same bat time, same bat channel. Have a good night, Tuckahoe.